For participating in debate, discussion and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? All right, D, approval of minutes of the zoning land use commission for the regular meeting of June twentieth twenty twenty four?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Soudier, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, communications?
No communication, sir.
Okay, we're going to F, public hearing, a rezoning from R one, single family residential to R three, multi-family residential's lot twenty one and twenty two. Um, square four, uh, Barrowtown subdivision twenty six oh six and twenty six oh eight, Larry Street, Kirby Bonverland is the applicant? Anyone here to, uh? Yes, sir, if you just wanna come up, state your name and address?
Cassius Nixon, twenty six oh six Larry Street.
Okay, you wanna tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Yeah, I wanna place a mobile home on the lot where I grew up at.
Okay, yes, sir, all right, if you just wanna step to the side for just one second?
All right.
Uh, open to the public on this matter, going once public? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, just come up, state your name and address, please.
Okay. I resign, my name is Ada Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
I resigned at twenty six twenty one Larry Street. Um, I have a question for Mr. Nixon.
Yes, ma'am.
Um.
You could ask it to the board and then.
Okay, I, Mr. Nixon, we wants to know, would you clean that lot up before placing a mobile home there? Because it's not fit for what you wants to put there at this time.
Okay, and that's, is that your only question, ma'am?
Uh, I have another question because I see Mr. Kirby Bonverland owns, um, this property also. Um, twenty six oh six, twenty six oh eight and twenty six twelve is full of debris that don't belongs there and, um, Larry Street is the only street I see that's not properly fit for where we live at. Other streets are clean with home, uh, their homes and all, but at twenty six twelve, if someone pass there, they'll see all of that. That's not called for.
Thank you, okay, any other questions? I'm gonna give him a chance to respond after you're done. Any other questions?
No other question.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, sir, if you wanna come back up and you wanna answer some of the questions that she had for you?
Okay, well, uh, in, in words of Kirby owning the property, I had to get Kirby to buy because the parish tore down our family house. So I got Kirby to buy, cuz at the time I wasn't able to bid on it to get it. So I got Kirby to buy and I'm in the process of paying Kirby back.
Okay, and, and she asked you about the debris and so forth, and ma'am, you could sit down if, if.
The debris will, will be moved in, within the next month. I'm moving out the debris a little bit at the, at a time when I work, I gotta pay people to help me to move it.
Yes, yes.
So it taking me a little while, but I done clean up a lot, but I still got some, some motive move, it gonna all be gone.
Okay, all right, all right, ma'am.
I have a question.
Okay, so if you, sir, if you just wanna step to the side, thank you.
We have no problem of him because we've been neighbors all our lives, but the problem is, will the twenty six oh six and twenty six oh eight be totally cleaned up? Properly put for a trailer to get there, is it a double wide or a single?
It's a single.
Would the property be properly clean like a property is supposed to be clean? To put a double wide there, uh, put a, put a trailer there?
Everything gonna be gone but my two shed.
Okay, all right, and we'll get into some, ma'am, you, you wanna speak? Yeah, yep, if you could come up to the mic, ma'am, and just state your name and address?
My name is Kelly Laguard and I wanna know.
Address, I'm sorry.
My, my address is twenty six oh five Larry Street.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And my question is, once the mobile home go there, is our property tax going up? Are we losing the value of our home by bringing a mobile home in?
Okay, we'll get into all those questions.
Okay.
I'll let administration clarify that. Um, sir, you can come back up. I tell you what, before you, before you do, let me finish off the, uh, the public hearing. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this matter? Anyone else going once, going twice, three times public on this matter?
Motion to close, second.
I have a motion to close by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, that's just to close the public hearing, now we're gonna have a conversation about it. Okay, uh, administration?
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanted to respond to some of what was said, um, with respect to the, the property and, and items and cleaning up the property. I did speak with Councilman Brian Pledger, who, uh, had a scheduled conflict and couldn't be here tonight. Um, but he is aware of that situation and, uh, we're talking about that and I'm glad to hear that the applicant is going to be cleaning the, the property up, that was one of Brian's biggest concerns. Um, and, you know, if, if, uh, there is any debris out there, that is something that nuisance abatement would need to address, it's not something that the planning commission here has any jurisdiction over and I would recommend that if, if you, you know, wanna address that, that you just address that by telling or directing us to go ahead and contact nuisance abatement and they can handle it accordingly.
And then she also had the tax question, if you wanna answer her tax question.
So I, I'm gonna defer to legal for that.
So Derek?
Thank you, Chris, I agree about the nuisance abatement, uh, discussion you had, also, she had two questions, I know the first one was about property tax. Uh, her property is still gonna be an R one, so I, I don't see how there'd be any change, but it's not something that I would normally deal with, but just from what I'm looking at. Um, secondly, as far as the value of the home, I have no way of knowing. I, I will say just from, you know, discussion, I see there's a bunch of R two lots there and across the street, there's a, a lot of R threes and it seems like it's a positive thing that he's cleaning up the lot. So that, that seems like a positive, but as far as what would happen to the value for home, I, I have no way of knowing.
Okay.
Well, it's based on, I mean, what someone's gonna pay for it, really. So it depends on the market, depends on interest rate, you know, so many variables on what the value for houses, insurance, yeah, great point.
I mean, I, I think, Mr. Rogers, I, I think your, your comment about, you know, you could certainly, ma'am, you could certainly contact the Terrebonne Parish Tax Assessor if you have a concern about your property taxes. As far as your property value goes, what I often hear is that that is really subject to interpretation or, or subjective until you actually have a situation where you have an appraisal pre this date and then another appraisal that comes up or comps, right? Comps here and comps after this date and, I mean, you know the world I'm talking about, so, um, that, that I think is, is something that's a little bit harder to pinpoint.
Okay. All right, uh, administration.
Yeah, so our staff report, uh, the proposal is to rezone from R one to R three for the purposes of placing a mobile home. The zoning ordinance states that in order to rezone property, one of the following conditions must apply. Error, change in conditions, increase in need for sites for business or industry, or number four subdivision of land. Applicant and staff agree that the application fits under item two, change in conditions due to the increasing need for affordable housing in the area. The subject property is budding in existing R three zone district, so the request is exempt from the minimum size requirement. The applicant has been approved for a mobile home through the State's Restore L.A. program to replace this home that was destroyed by Ida. There is a mobile home permit application that is pending zoning approval. All public notice requirements have been met and staff received two calls regarding the request expressing no opposition, staff recommends approval.
Okay, commissioners, any comments? Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nixon, you, 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 there's two lots here and I noticed you said you're gonna put a mobile home there on one of the addresses.
No, we're going across both of them.
Okay, so that one mobile home will spread across both lots, okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, comments, if not, I would be looking for a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve as per staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau and a second by Ms. Angel, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes, congratulations.
And just for everyone's awareness, this is a recommendation that's going to the council, so ultimately it'll be at the council. I don't know if we have dates yet, but it'll be sometime in August.
All right, so now we're moving on to, um, F two.
Hang on, what is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Train, train was in gear.
Is it at the front? Where is it? I know it's gonna be, well, the twenty eighth is the last date of August that they have a council meeting, but it can't be that far back.
It could be.
I really should reword my recommendations.
September twenty fifth.
No. No, remember? It'll be introduced, okay, August twelfth and then.
Hold it over thirty days.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, right, okay. There you go, Labor Day.
What's the date again?
September twenty fifth.
September twenty.
Would be the, the public hearing at the council, they're, they're gonna introduce it in August, but August twelfth, but the actual public hearing would be September twenty fifth.
Okay.
Thank you, Becky.
All right, thank you, administration.
Thirty days.
All right, we are gonna go to F two now, uh, rezoning from R one, single family residential to R two, two family residential's lot one through twenty seven, block one, lots one through nine, block two, lots one through thirty nine, block three, lots one through nineteen, block four, Parkway Place subdivision, Gym Builders LLC. Yes, sir, name and address.
David Wade, seventy eight thirty nine Park Avenue, Homa, uh, representing Chris Ernie on the rezoning, uh, the remaining lots of Parkwood. Half of the lots have been rezoned already from R one to R two and we're asking for the remaining uh, section out there to be rezoned from R one to R two.
Okay, and we're gonna open it up to the public? Going once, public on this matter? Going two times, public on this matter? Three times public?
Move to close, second?
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a proposal to rezone lots one through twenty seven of block one, lots one through nine of block two and lots one through thirty nine of block three and lots one through nineteen of block four of Parkwood Place subdivision from R one to R two. The zoning ordinance states that in order to rezone property, one of the following conditions must apply. Error, change in conditions, increase in need for sites for business or industry or subdivision of land. The applicant and staff agree the application fits under item two, change in conditions. Parkwood subdivision received final approval by the planning commission in twenty eighteen and was originally conceived as a mixed density residential development consisting mainly of single family residential with higher density residential in future development areas. The site is adjacent to lots zone neighborhood commercial in order to provide locations for businesses to provide for the needs of the future residents. Since twenty eighteen, a combination of factors such as high interest rates and increased costs of insurance have slowed sales and construction and Hurricane Ida in twenty twenty one destroyed much of the housing stock in Terrebonne, especially affordable housing. Uh, Terrebonne Parish Consolidated Government Housing and Human Services have been working closely with applicant as well as several community housing development organizations to provide quality affordable housing. In fall twenty twenty two, the zoning land use commission and the council approved a rezone from R one to R two for fifty or so lots in the center of Parkwood subdivision and the designers have prepared plans for great looking duplexes which serve to provide more affordable housing. This rezone would provide an opportunity for more of the same. Single family average daily trips are ten point zero six and duplexes are five point eight six, resulting in fewer average daily trips. It would not negatively impact the streets nor would the increase impact drainage because the footprint for the duplex would be the same as the single family residential. All public notice requirements have been met, staff received no calls, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, administration, uh, first of all, any comments by the commissioners? Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir, you, uh, I, 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 I see your explanation, change in conditions, but initially this track was proposed as a hundred and forty four single family dwelling, right? In, in initially, Parkwood.
Well, what you see, yes, but the future development area that's, well, it's black, it looks black in the screen there, but it was just called out as future development, the plans that I've seen showed multifamily.
Yeah, well, I, I, I understand what y'all doing or trying to do, I, I just, when you cite change in conditions, I wonder what we're talking about change in conditions in the subdivision and, you know, I mean, it was proposed to be R one?
Well, which, which one would you, would you suggest?
I don't know, I looked at them and I don't have an answer, I don't know, so you've.
I picked the best, I picked the best one I could, that's.
I'm gonna leave it alone then if you did that. That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau, Mr. McGuire?
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're good, okay. All right.
I'll offer motion approval as per staff recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau and a second by Mr. Soudier, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Yeah, and just, just again, for clarification purposes, the, uh, approval tonight is, is a recommendation from the zoning and land use commission to the parish council, so at the parish council meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty four, they'll be calling for a public hearing and the public hearing will actually be September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, administration, that's why I acknowledge Mr. Councilman from District One, Mr. Brian Pledger, just walked in, thank you for being here, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, you got Carl Harding?
Hey, bud, sorry, I didn't see you back there, my, I got my glasses on, I can see close, not far.
So Carl Harding from Council District Two.
District Two.
As well.
All right, guys, thank y'all both for coming, we appreciate it, we know y'all both got busy schedules. Okay, we are going to G one, preliminary hearing, uh, for rezoning from R one, single family residential to R two, two family residential, one four eight Square Wolf Lane, Karen Harris, the applicant, calls for a public hearing on said matter for Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. Looking for a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Soudier, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes. We're going to G one B, rezone from open land to C two, general commercial, nineteen twenty three, Saint Louis Canal Road, Walton Jefferson and Ms. Jeanette, uh, Daisy is the applicant uh, for a public hearing on said matter for Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at six P M, looking for a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. A second by Ms. Angel, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes, uh, H, staff report?
Yes, sir, so, uh, what we wanted to talk to you guys about tonight? Um, you all, uh, or at least those, I know we have a, a, a number of, of newer members, but in recent years, we've had a couple of home occupation applications come before the zoning and land use commission from folks who are looking to open up a pet grooming service in their home. So home occupations, so, you know, I think some of the more typical uh, types are like a beauty salon, you know, somebody converting a room in their house to that. Uh, massage therapy, we've seen a number of those. Um, piano lessons, tutoring, things of a personal nature that are recurring, something that happens on a monthly or quarterly basis, right? With pet grooming services, oftentimes it also included like kennels or overnight boarding, but some of them were just strictly that, pet grooming, they wanted to clip dogs or something like that, right? Which is a recurring basis. Now, is it personal? Well, it isn't necessarily personal to a human being, but for some people and their fur babies, that, that is personal, right? Um, I mean, their kid, they're bringing their kids to get their haircut or to piano lessons, why not their dog to get a haircut? Um, at the time, uh, and one of the latest ones, and I think that was maybe in twenty seventeen, I think it's, we have it in, in the backup, we'd actually gone so far, yeah, it was April twentieth of twenty seventeen. We had requested an opinion from the legal department and that's essentially what they fell on to, well, two things, one, where does pet grooming services fall in the zoning ordinances? In the definitions, it falls under, uh, Animal Services Limited, which is a commercial activity. Right, so that, that's like vets and all, I mean, there's a whole bunch of more in that definition than just pet grooming services. So between that and that it was at the opinion at the time was personal services for human personal services. Um, the opinion basically said it is not eligible for a home occupation. But as time goes on and we're seeing more of those requests come along, we're starting to think, well, maybe if we just limit it further and just specific to the pet grooming services. You know, so we're not talking about kennels, we're not talking about boarding, we're not talking about veterinary services, we're strictly talking about pet grooming services. Um, and so what we're proposing is a consideration to amend the definition of home occupation to get a bit more specific instead of just saying Animal Services Limited, but just to pull the, some of the specific terminology out of the Animal Services Limited definition to be specific to dog bathing and clipping salons and pet grooming shops, but excluding outdoor kennels and overnight boarding.
Gotcha.
As an acceptable or eligible type of home occupation. It's still, they still have to come before you guys for the home occupation approval, but it just opens it up a little bit more to allow for that particular type of service. So that's what this is about, I'm just discussion and possible action, I mean, obviously, you're just seeing this, you know, the, the protocol, the procedure here is for us to introduce this, um, discuss it and then, you know, we want to call for a public hearing. Well, we would like for you guys to call for the public hearing on Thursday, August fifteenth, at our next regular meeting. And at that time, it, the, the request or possible action would be to approve the resolution and basically forward the matter on to the parish council for consideration, just like you did for the rezonings earlier.
Okay.
So right now, it's just more of an open discussion.
Yeah, any commissioners have a comment or does someone wanna make a motion to, uh, have a public hearing on August fifteenth? Mr.? Mr.?
Go ahead, I can, I can talk after, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Soudier, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, and Mr. Thibodeau, you have the floor?
Yeah, the, the reason we're doing this is to be more concise with, with, I guess, with the home op, app, home, home occupation application?
Well, the reason we're doing it is because we continue to have these types of requests, so it seems to be the type of thing that is becoming more and more commonplace and, and, you know, these zoning ordinances were from nineteen seventy six, you know, we didn't have fur, I don't know if fur baby was a term in nineteen seventy six. At any rate, we keep getting asked these questions and, and rather than just telling these, giving these people a flat no, say, well, wait a minute, you know, maybe there's some, something in there and let's think about it a little bit more, so when we, when we did, and, and in looking at the twenty seventeen, um, legal opinion, when we saw what they were citing specifically out of the ordinances, we said, well, wait, maybe we could make a few adjustments there and, and open it up.
Do, do, as far as you know, have we had any of the approved requests expand to boarding and, uh, something else?
Well, so far, they've never been approved.
Okay. We've had no home occupation for dog grooming?
Not for pet grooming, no.
Well, we did approve some way back when and then whenever we had the one issue that brought up the legal.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's right, there was one, I don't know the name of the subdivision, but it's next to Berrios. Lamar subdivision.
But it didn't generate a complaint of, of some expansion.
Phone's not ringing.
Boarding, okay, thank you.
Okay, so once again, I, I have a motion by Mr. Soudier, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Commissioner comments, and, uh, I know Mr. Carl's here, um, if there is something y'all would like to, so we're wrapping up the, um, zoning and land use commission, we're moving on to the planning, you're okay? Okay, Mr. Brian, if you wanted to mention something right now, too, you're good, okay? All right, uh, commissioner comments? Chairman comments? Public comments? Need a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes. All right, we're gonna jump right into it, convening as a regional planning commission. Once again, I will have the, uh, prayer by Mr. Thibodeau and this time the pledge will be done by Mr. McGuire.
God, we thank you this day for your grace, we thank you for your mercy and Lord, as we deliberate this evening, we ask and pray that we provide value to our citizens of Terrebonne. And Lord, we ask that you bless the parish, uh, bless our state and please bless our nation, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. The United States of America and two republics which stand as one nation under God and the visible liberty and justice for all. All right, Ms. Becky, roll call.
Mr. Billiot?
Here.
Mr. Gold? Mr. Liner?
Here.
Mr. McGuire? Mrs. Panson?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Soudier? Mr. Thibodeau? We have a forum.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Uh, see conflict disclosure, a reminder to the commissioners that at any time tonight, a conflict of interest exists, arises or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself participating in debate, discussion and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Okay, um, D, approval of the minutes of the Homa Terrebonne Regional Planning Commission minutes for the regular meeting of June twenty 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 four. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second, Ms. Angel, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. E, Mr. Soudier?
Motion to approve the remittance of payment for the status for the July eighteen, two thousand twenty four invoices and the treasure report for June twenty twenty four.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Soudier and a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes, communications?
Uh, well, sir, we don't have any, uh, communications, but I would like to, uh, communicate, welcome to our newest planning commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mike Billiot.
How you doing? Welcome, Mr. Michael?
Attorney, planner, PhD in planning, so.
Yeah, thank you for joining us, I'm sure your expertise will be, uh, used.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
All right, um, G O business, um, need a motion to take one, um, and two um, off the table?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. McGuire, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes, all right. G one, survey and division of property belonging to the estate of D.C. McIntyre LLC into lot one and two. Yes, sir, name and address?
David Wade, seventy eight thirty nine Park Avenue, Homa. Uh, representing the developer for this particular track. It's been on the agenda for quite a while, we were dealing with in the past about maybe trying to get into variance for drainage report and all that other stuff. So we finally got the drainage report done and approved by, uh, by engineering and all the other things are done, it's the main minor subdivision and we're asking for approval tonight.
Okay, and I see there's no public hearing here, so we'll just go straight to administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single family residential use. The applicant withdrew their request for a variance and submitted a drainage study. The proposed lot two is already developed, so drainage calcs are only for lot one. The proposed lot configuration and layout meets parish subdivision regulation standards. All utility letters have been submitted, Terrebonne Parish Engineering has issued an approval letter, staff. Terrebonne Parish Engineering has issued an approval letter. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, administration. Any commissioner comments? If not, looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve as per staff recommendation.
Have a mo- motion by Mister Rogers, a second by Miss Angel. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you.
G two, lot A through I, a re-division of property belonging to Mister Paul Portell Carter. Someone would like to come up?
I'm not sure where Mister Rembert is. I I talked to him at four fifteen and I thought he was coming to the meeting, but he hasn't shown up.
Okay, so, um, we'll open it up to the public. On this matter, go on once public, two times public on this matter, three times public. I have a motion by Mister Rogers. A second by Mister Soudier. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Administration.
Um. Well, Mister Chairman, our recommendation is gonna be to table this item.
Okay.
Um, we have not, uh. Received any information regarding the whether or not the hydrant's been placed, so just go ahead and table. We will recommend that it be tabled.
Okay, looking for a motion on that commissioners. At motion by Mister Soudier, a second by Mister Rogers. All approved. Aye.
I'm sorry, yeah, table it to the next regular meeting. My bad, sorry.
Okay, once again, I have a motion by Mister Soudier, a second by Mister Rogers. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. H one, lot five A and five B, a re-division of revised lot five, block nine, addendum. Number three to Mulberry subdivision. Someone here? For H one?
This is the same. It's it's Ken Rembert's project.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, yeah, I see it now. Okay, um.
No one here, no one else is here.
You want me to do a public hearing or just table it as well?
Well. I mean, if this were some routine conditions of approval, I would, I would, I might think otherwise, but there is something on there that. I think needs to actually have the applicant to agree to on record. Um, so I I think the best thing to do in this instance is to table it.
For just to.
For the to the next regular meeting.
Okay, uh. A motion by Mister Thibodeau, a second by Miss Angel. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. H two, division of parcel E, phase one B, lot one through five on Alma Heights subdivision. Belonging to Shab Bay Bay.
Elisa Champagne, Charles McDonald Land Surveyors, three-six-nine-seven West Main Street. Uh, what we have here is a, um, minor subdivision of a tract of land dividing it into five tracks. Um, we are asking for a variance from the fire hydrant, uh, location for track one. Uh, it does fall within a ten percent, that allowable ten percent. Uh, in addition, um. All the utility letters haven't been turned into the department yet, but we do have them all back. Um, and, um. Um, what was I gonna say? Lost my train of thought there. Um, that's it. Well, it's really just a five lots.
Yes, ma'am. If you just wanna step to the side for a second, I'll open it to the public on this matter. Go on once public. Two times public, three times public. Motion by Mister Rogers. Second by Mister Thibodeau. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Administration.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, this is a minor subdivision process D. To create five lots for single-family residential use with a variance request from the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot fire hydrant distance for lot one. The proposed lot configuration and layout meet Parish Subdivision Regulation standards, except for the fire hydrant distance. The overage is within the ten percent allowable distance as per the Planning Commission policy. Municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat. Not all utility letters have been submitted. Applicant has indicated that the development will utilize either individual treatment plants or community sewer. Terrebonne Parish Pollution Control has confirmed that community sewer is not available in the area. But the Department of Health has issued an approval letter. All public notice requirements have been met. Staff received two calls for more information. Staff recommends approval of the fire hydrant distance from two-hundred-and-fifty feet to two-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-six feet for lot one. Staff recommends approval of the subdivision on the following conditions. Municipal addresses be depicted on the plat. Submit all utility letters and that the applicant acknowledged that sewer type shall be individual treatment plants.
Okay, thank you, administration. Any commissioner comments? If not, looking for a motion. Mister Thibodeau.
Yes, sir. Mister, uh, Director. Uh, this thing is probably a stone's throw away from the north plant, but there is no, there are no lines in the area.
Well, I I'll be shooting at the at the darkness, but I I have a feeling that's probably why they put ore. On their application, but I did confirm with Pollution Control, they went out and looked at it. They said it is close. But it's just a little bit too far away to require that they tie into the community sewer. But, you know, can, look, since you mentioned it, um, since, um, Community Sewer Systems is. You know, a master plan and and implementation of expansion is one of the. Uh, projects that has been proposed as part of the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. Allocations that we received from Hurricane Ida, uh, you know, this area, we're gonna be looking. At a master plan, we're gonna look to areas to prioritize, so it's it's possible that sewer, uh, community sewer may become available. And I actually typed that all into the staff report and then I started deleting it out. I figured you would ask it, though. Uh, but, uh, certainly, I mean, they're not locked into. Individual treatment plants forever. If community sewer becomes available, they can tie into it.
And 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 since you brought up the CDBG, DRI, I noticed that that is just a study, is just to. Script out a process or a plan, so nobody's gonna get any sewer from this, right? Based on what I read.
The right, that in the first alloc- or, sorry, the first description. Project description, project summary that was submitted to the state, which is what you were reading. Um, that, there wasn't enough money to, at least to identify if they could implement. Now. At, we're in the process of submitting a more detailed, um. Description of the project, so if the costing comes back, that the actual master plan cost may be. Less than what was initially anticipated, which would then open up the door for some, uh, implementation. Certainly, that would become part of the language in that proposal. If there's any additional funding, DR funding, that comes along later. You know, sometimes money is goes unspent by other states, other jurisdictions, what have you, if more funding. Or if another project in the DR list of projects turns out that there's. We we were alloc- or budgeting more money than necessary, we could re-budget that money or reallocate that to this project. This is. One of our, you know, priority-type projects. It's just. You know, that type of infrastructure is very costly, so.
I understand. Mister Chairman, you could shut me off if I go a little far, but since we on this, uh, did we get approval yet on on the plan?
We have approval for all of the projects who are submitted in all of them, the ones in January and the ones in March. Now. Rather than, uh, at first they said, okay, well, you're gonna have until June nineteenth. To submit the refined plans for the ones that were approved back in January. Right before June nineteenth came along, they said, you know what? No. You submit them all by November thirtieth, but it's a rolling deadline, so that what I mean by that is. As soon as we get one, we're not sitting on it till November thirtieth. Once we get one finished, we're submitting it, so.
Yeah, well, all right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, I don't remember. Uh, Commissioner, okay, we're looking for a motion.
Additional approval.
We're looking for a a motion for, um, H two, correct?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and move for staff recommendations for the variance as well as, uh, the other conditions stated.
I have a motion by Mister Rogers. A second by Miss Angel. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, H three. Uh, a division of property belonging to Alamon Crawfish Farms. Trac- tracks A and B.
Elisa Champagne, uh, Charles McDonald Land Surveyors, three-six-nine-seven West Main Street. Uh, we have a, this is a minor subdivision located on Butcher Road, where they have a fairly large track in the rear. They have some crawfish ponds that they fish crawfish in, and they would like to carve out this little track A in the front. To be able to build a home, I think, and, um. Where we were in within the required for our fire hydrant location and, uh, we asked for approval.
Thank you so much. And if you just wanna step to the side just for a second, we'll open some public hearing on this matter. Go on once public hearing on this matter, two times public hearing on this matter, three times public hearing. I have a motion by Mister Rogers, a second by Mister Thibodeau. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Administration.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, this is minor subdivision process D to create two lots, one for single-family residential and one raw land. Although submitted as a process D, this is more akin to a process A, raw land division. The proposed track A is already developed. All that's really being done here is to carve out a raw land track, it's track B. Lot configuration and layout meet Parish Subdivision Regulation standards for development. Municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat. Drainage calcs aren't required. Um, there have been proposed subdivisions in the past that were ultimately withdrawn by the applicant. Because the planning commission was requiring them to hard surface Butcher Road. Now, those were major subdivisions. Uh, since this is a minor subdivision, raw land division, the improvements are not a requirement. Not all utility letters have been provided, but a process A, the raw land division doesn't require utility letters anyway. Staff received one call inquiring about the past applications and that would this one be required to hard surface Butcher Road. Staff recommends approval on the condition that municipal addresses for raw land track B be depicted on the plat.
Thank you, administration. Commissioner comments?
Question, you know. The commission can require improvement and and I I I noticed because it is a raw land submission, then the Butcher Road. Doesn't have to be impacted, doesn't have to be intended to. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. And we get, we get, we getting a lot of these and perhaps some of the, not a lot of these specific ones, but perhaps some of these minor subdivisions. Uh, you know, I guess they're complying with everything in A. Process A and D and.
Well, they're not compliant with A because they they have, they need to have municipal address for the track B. But I hear you, yeah, everything else.
Anyway, I I just wish we continue to pay attention to, maybe some folks are trying to get around. Some of their duties and responsibilities, um, under the planning, so thank you, sir.
Okay, any other, uh, comments about our commissioners? Okay, I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move approval on the condition that the minimum land rent is for raw land to be depicted on the plat as per staff.
I have a motion by Mister Rogers, I think a second by Mister Billiot. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Staff report. Yes, ma'am.
Nothing to report.
Administrative approvals.
I'll move administrative approvals, one through five.
I have a motion by Mister Rogers, a second by Mister Soudier. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. K, um, committee report.
We didn't meet.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Once again, I wanna open it up to Mister Carl. Mister Brian, y'all okay? All right, any other Commissioner comments? Mister Thibodeau.
Yeah, well, Mister Director, did we give any more thought to the signage required? And the lettering on the sign from two inches to a to a larger.
Actually, what I think we're gonna start doing is printing out the signs for the applicants and then giving them the signs to go post. That way, we can ensure that all the size requirements are met, you know, we don't have to fool with any of that. We've got a. A a large-scale, you know, printer that can handle that that size. And I'll be especially happy to print those out whenever we move back into the tower, hopefully at the end of the summer.
Will there be a fee for that?
There's gonna be a cost associated with that.
Well, it's, you know, we have it, we have application fees, so I mean, the 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 cost for the for that are. Covered, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, anyone else? No chairman comments? Any public comments? I need a motion to adjourn, please. I have motion by Mister Rogers, a second by Mister Soudier. All approved. Aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.